Yeah.
Like my face.
I rely on.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's regular school board meeting on Monday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Like to call this meeting to order. We have met official compliance with all of our notifications. Roll call, please.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Nick Schumacher, I'm here. Sarah Schubert McCone.
Here.
Gal here.
Here.
President Steve Olson.
Here.
Nikolsen excused.
All right, at this time, would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by the entrance and handing it to our deputy clerk. The board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. So our first item tonight, comments by members of the public, anything, Ann? All right. Disposition of minutes from July fifteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes from July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is our report from our superintendent, Dr. Amy Starzacki.
You want me to go through? Okay. Um.
Just.
As to meeting, I talked a little bit about our, my annual goals for twenty-four, twenty-five, focused on referendum and financial planning as well as the strategic plan for the next five years, as well as elevating our graduation goal to include college and career readiness with the plan to in, um, increase our reading and our math proficiency across grade level. So that was my focus I shared last week. Um, tonight we have the FBLA National Leadership Conference update, so thank you for everyone for coming. Um, who should I pass it out to tonight? You want to come up here, Donna?
Of course.
All right.
Not all, but most.
They all can if they're.
They all can, yeah.
We're having a meeting after this, so I have some coming. Thanks for coming. Thank you for letting us come. We attended the national conference in Orlando, Florida from June thirtieth to July second. Um, so we flew down. Um, Caitlin and Marcus were in Italy prior to that, so they took a little extended vacation and so they had a long vacation. Yes. So these were the six students that did attend, and in a few minutes, they will talk about their different events. Um, Michelle Taver also came with me as a chaperone, um, because my co-advisor left the district on me at the end of the year, so. Um, just a few facts about national conferences, like seventeen thousand middle and high school students. And also the college was two days prior to ours. There's more than a hundred different competitions that these students can compete in. And then they, they have open events, which means every year FBLA pilots new tests, so they let the students take the pilot test, so they're prepared to see how they are when they administer them as new tests in the future. They also had a campaign election of national officers, which is an awesome opportunity for students. They had a lot of workshops that they attended, and they'll talk to you about that. They were able to sit in on final performances from other chapters, so they have some idea coming back this year what it looks like to be in the top ten. Um, they had colleges, universities were there, set up all over across handing out swag. They had a speaker that talked about, um, he was the founder and CEO of LoveSack, basically it's a beanbag. Um, but he gave a great presentation and also did some workshops. And then, of course, they did a lot of exchanging of pins. So Madeline, do you want to talk about your pins?
Um, so every state, um, gets a different pin designed by the officers. Ours, I actually traded online away, but ours was a little chief's head, um, this year, and you have to find other members of FBLA from different states at the conference, the expo center, introduce yourself and, um, have a conversation before trading pins. Here's my, my favorite one, Tennessee had a lot of this Presley.
So I'm going to let the students talk about their specific individual events.
This year, me and my partner, we both did entrepreneurship, and it covers a lot of different things. So last year I did international business, um, and it set me up pretty well for this because there's just so much you have to cover from financials to policies and, um, you know, there's a lot involved in entrepreneurship, and so we have to study that. And then at the regional level, it's just a test, so just based on the facts and what you can know, um, from what you've studied. And then moving on to the state level, if you've been into the top eight based on your tests, you move on to a performance round. So you sit down with a judge and, um, my partner Kylie Peterson, we have twenty minutes after given a prompt to come up with our, um, presentation, and then we, um, sit down with the judge and we present it. We're scoring off that, and that placed us in second place at state, and so we were able to move on to nationals to compete.
Nice.
Congratulations.
Any questions for Madeline on private event?
What was your subject that you were given in twenty minutes for?
For the role plays, um, it was, uh, we were the owners of a lawn care business, and we had to create a plan, wh- which actually helped us a lot because the size of the city that it was, that we were role-playing as was about the size of Superior, so we got to build off of that a lot, and the name of our company was Superior Lawns.
Caitlin and Marcus?
Yeah, so Marcus and I competed in marketing at, um, both, or at all regional, state, and national levels. So for the regional level, we just took an objective test, and we took second there, so we got to move on to state. At state, we took another objective test, and I think that placed us in the top ten, so we got to move on to a role play. And the judges really liked us, so we got, we took first in that, and so we won state after our role play, so we got to move on to nationals in marketing. Um, the topic of our role play was, um, just how this small business could expand further and bring your business onto an online market, which was an interesting topic that we got to present.
Yeah, I think we would have taken it all the way at nationals. We were just coming off Italy as a little jet lag. Yeah, well, we'll be at, we'll be back next year to bring home the gold.
You've got all this experience now.
Yeah.
Next year, you'll sacrifice the international travels for.
Yeah. It was amazing, though. The parents made it work because they flew from Minneapolis to Tampa and then drove from Tampa to Orlando. Got there like three in the morning.
The district has been very helpful, like specifically Ellen Athletics and, um, Mr. Fezzi, because they, for regionals, um, we, they had Ms. Noel come and drive to pick us up because we were at Superior Days, delegating, and then we, or, so we had to go, we went from regionals to Superior Days, and then we went from Italy to Orlando, so it, it, just everything kind of con, come, had a conflict, but the district helped us make it happen so we could do everything that we wanted to, which we're extremely grateful for.
That's awesome.
And Wild will talk to you about the computer game simulation program.
So me and my partner Daniel Youngberg competed in computer game simulation. So our task was create a game that met certain criteria set for at the start of a whole event. So we had roughly three months to develop our game, and then we were judged on both how developed our game was and our ability to then present it to a panel of judges in seven minutes. And so it was a straight to state event, so we didn't have to compete at regionals, and then at state, we had to place in the top four in order to move on. After presenting our, we had to present our game twice at state, and we ended up placing fifth overall, and man, and one of the top four people had to drop out due to other commitments they had, and so we were able to take their spot and look to nationals. At nationals, we had to once again present our game twice. We sadly did not make it past the first round, but this allowed us more opportunities to look at other workshops and other events that were at nationals.
Cool. Really proud of you guys.
Congratulations.
Very nice.
Donna, how many, how many students do we have in our FBLA program at the?
Thirty-five last year and six went to nationals. Yeah.
And then it's, it's the, the regional first, and some, you got to go right on to state, I remember that.
Regional, you have to place in the top five, top four. Top four or five to go to state, to state, and then the state moves on to national.
Like you mentioned, there are some categories that get to go right to state.
Yes. The ones that take a lot of, like, the financial business plan, things that take months and months to develop.
True.
So they actually have, like, a financial business plan, a traditional business plan. Um, there's a lot, like I said, there's a hundred seventy-two events just for high school. Of course, we had some fun. They had opening session. That flag is important because it's huge. Um, the room is huge, and if you don't have that flag, you can't find your way back home. Um, the opening session and the closing sessions are online at YouTube, so if anybody wants to view them, they can. Um, this is just a photo of the kids. Um, we charted, we fussed between the hotel and the conference center, so we spent some time on the buses going back and forth, which was nice that they had that transportation for us. Um, just another photo. Here, they're going to workshops, one on the, on my left, they're at what they call the exhibit hall where the colleges are and the fundraising and all those different types of things. Everything is dressed for success, so they have to be in FBLA attire.
You guys look nice.
Yeah. Um, we did go out to eat at an Indian restaurant. We decided to experience a little bit of culture with, when we were out there, which is really good. And of course, we were three blocks from the Universal Studios, the attraction, so we spent some time there. Um, some were prepared for the rain and some were not. The Florida downpours, which happened like twice a day. Um, there's Daniel and Wild at the exhibit, and that, we had an advisor section where they had this nice chair that you could relax in. Um, it was set for a timer for like twenty minutes. It would be a really good investment in our teacher life.
Goodness, does it?
Yeah, and of course I had to track how many steps I took one day, so that was my steps for the day. And we did a little bit of shopping. Of course, you can't take everything home that you see. Um, we were at the, what's it called? It's Harry Potter World. Pumpkin juice is awesome. So Michelle and I were drinking pumpkin juice, and this is the kids with their new hats saying goodbye to Orlando and thanking you for letting us participate.
Thanks, Javi, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here. I, I will say this, Donna, you do not have to stay. I understand you have a meeting.
We're going to meet in one hour. Program of work.
All right. Like to get a head start, you can.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I conclude my report.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'd try the pumpkin juice.
I would. If they said it's good, I'm gonna drink beer. Isn't that, the thing's so good?
I've heard that it's really good. It's like, oh, you've had some? Okay, I'll have to try it sometime. So that.
All right, moving on with the agenda. First up is the Budget Insurance Committee informational items, reports on the FOM two revenue and expenditure, expenditure reports. Action items, gifts, grants, and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in July of two thousand twenty-four. We had one anonymous donator.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Administration recommends approval to delegate the Director of Business Services, a school board official, and District Administrator, Dr. Amy Starzacki, the authority to negotiate the sale of Lake Superior Elementary and to sign the contract.
Motion approved.
Second.
So motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. A new action item this evening, Resolution twenty-four dash oh seven, authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit for five years for non-reoccurring purposes.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second to approve Resolution twenty-four dash oh seven. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, just as, uh, what we discussed last week, it's option one. Yeah, sixty percent of the community said they were for. This, this gets approved, it's official, it gets sent out, so we can get this put onto the ballot, but all the, the hard work begins after that, so. You know, to the community, get the community involved, um, we need to know, teach you to see if you guys have ideas, something we can call in and working with districts and CISOs and other organizations to, to go through with the plan, so.
Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is new Resolution twenty-four dash oh eight, providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit for five years for non-reoccurring purposes.
Motion approved. I am.
Motion in a second for Resolution twenty-four dash oh eight. Is there any further discussion?
We, any, any concern that the question on the actual ballot is a little wordy?
There's so many restrictions we have on it. Some of we worked with, uh, the firm of Milwaukee, this is the best way to write up the question. I think what it comes down to is, isn't how the wording is on the question, it's all the information we get out to the community ahead of time, so.
Point, though. They're always kind of, it just, right, it just seems like every relation, I mean, we know it's a lot of money, but I mean, to the average person, it's like, oh, yeah, extreme amount of money.
Right. They don't realize the breakdown.
Right, right. I just didn't know if they were going to try to explain, like, the mill rate situation or anything like that, or if that's the job of the district.
That's our job, probably.
And it's just the one question.
Any other concerns?
Comments?
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. New Resolution twenty-four dash oh nine. Motion to approve the resolutions providing for the sale of real estate property as presented.
Motion approved.
I couldn't open this online, so.
Thanks.
I can have a second?
It wasn't.
Do you want to address that? Yeah, it's a reason for.
It's an attachment. We had to wait for the board meeting.
You had to wait for.
You make it a little bit bigger for the kids in the back.
Yes.
Can I have your email to us or something?
Yeah. After we approve it, correct? Or can it go right now?
Oh.
Yeah, he can send it to you.
That was good. First, I hate to approve it without, you know, reading the whole thing.
Do you want me?
Agreed. Yes.
Email right now?
Please.
Want David to highlight it?
Sure.
Yeah, can you give us the, you, so what chain? Highlight it while she's sending it.
So what it is, is the reason it wasn't sent out ahead of time is because it has confidential information about what's the prices and the purchaser is. Um, it came back with, we had a discussion during closed session, we made the common offer for nine fifty or nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, Brian Nelson agreed to that price, um, with no other changes whatsoever on the, yeah, common offer itself. Um, as, as I've said in the past, this is moving, I think we, we got lucky that we found a buyer that's actually local, that really wants to build this up and, and do it. Um, I was, I wasn't anticipating selling the school anywhere this, one of the times was that we're going to have this for a while. Uh, so again, it's, it's nine fifty, thirty days, or due diligence, thirty days to close. Yeah, it's, uh, one of the lines in there is that it cannot be reused as a school again. If somebody uses a school, then it burns back out.
I did send it.
There we go. I got it. Is that the end of it, Ann?
Oh, no.
Okay, for, so it's one page. Okay.
Yeah.
We take two minutes?
Yes.
Absolutely. This will be one you have to sign, Mr. Schubacher.
And can you scroll up through those eight points again?
I can.
Yeah, I just want to see the eight points. It's really not that long. It's okay.
Where are the next steps then, once we sign this today?
Uh, once this is signed, this. Once it's approved, it's on the, the clock starts, the thirty day due diligence starts, um, already had contact with the title company. It's going to come in and do the title side of it as well. Um, Frank Fulner from, from, for real estate is kind of taking the lead on that as well. I tell them at least once every couple of days to see what's going on and making sure everything, um, is going through. We've had, you know, were other people contacting him about the property? None of them were, never. One was, he just assumes somebody was out there because they would just ask questions about it. One was somebody local that wants to turn it into a storage facility, and one was somebody that was probably wrote that one turning it into a storage facility, and then another one was, uh, was somebody kicking the tires on it to see. Somebody didn't see many, there wasn't another attractive buyer that also.
And they all could have presented an offer at that point?
Yeah.
And nobody?
So you're still going to actually show it to one person, because I'm not going to, a lot can happen over sixty days, so if somebody else wants to look at it and, you know, submit a contingency offer or whatever.
Okay.
Um, one of our previous action items is to include a school board official in signing for, to negotiate and to sign the contract. Does school board official need to be added into the resolution?
No, it's, they just, they added that in case, like, if Amy and I win a lottery, they just need somebody else to sign the contract. So as long as Amy and I don't, are available to sign it, then you can do it, but it's already been, and that was for the offer.
Well, you're saying if you want a lottery, you wouldn't be here.
He's not speaking on behalf of me.
It's fine.
You.
I'm here, but that's what I'm saying. Yeah. That's the problem.
Okay.
No cuts for the most. Can you explain one more time where the proceeds from the sale are going to go? Where, what they're going to go towards?
So a tentative plan with that is it's going to get rolled into fund ten, just in case we need those funds for this coming school. If we get to the end of the year, we don't need those funds in fund ten, which I don't anticipate they'd be needed. I would like to move over to fund forty-six cents, so it can start with the, you know, capital projects we have to have on the school. So that would be a good, it'd be a good chunk of money to set aside for a rough sum of the money, it's kind of.
Yeah, so you do have to make a decision of where you want to put it. The fund ten is the general fund that can be used.
Like you said, so in the event, you know, we have an unexpected expense or something happens this year that allows us to balance the budget using that, but um, you don't want to have a significant surplus at the end of the school year, and an allowable place to put that surplus would be in fund forty-six, this is how we've done that in the past, and so we've been able to build up that for, um, capital expenses, significant ones.
Another reason I agree to the end of the year is, like, to give us some time, because once I put money into fund forty-six.
You can't take it out, yeah.
You say end of the year, calendar year or school fiscal, it's called?
There been a motion yet?
Yes.
There are.
No, no, it wasn't.
So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, a motion goes up.
A second is motion.
It's motion in a second to accept Resolution twenty-four dash oh nine, providing for the sale of the real property. Now, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. There were no discussion items? Excuse me. Is there a motion to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report?
Motion to accept.
Sorry.
Motion in a second to accept the Budget Insurance Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Teaching and Learning Committee, no action items, no discussion items, informational items that the committee, the whole, on August fifth, Dean Hagan, Director of Student Services, preside, presented us with the twenty-three, twenty-four seclusion and restraint data. Crystal Hinsman, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, provided information on staff development days for the, for the coming school year and the new teacher orientation for twenty-four, twenty-five. Kate Tesh, our Director of Continuous Improvement and Assessment, discussed the strategic planning update, and she provided information about the Act Twenty assessment.
We're going to provide us an update on the, uh, new teacher for this, or the, uh, welcome back thing?
Yeah, it is going out on Thursday.
Okay.
Yes. There's a video included.
Motion to accept Teaching and Learning Committee report.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the Teaching and Learning Committee report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Personnel Negotiations Committee, action items, administration recommends approval of the August twenty twenty-four new hiries and separations report.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion in a second for the recommendation for the approval of new hiries and separations for August twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. No discussion items, no informational items.
Motion accept Personnel Negotiations Committee report.
Motion in a second to accept Personnel Negotiations Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Action item, administration proposes the approval of the changes to the following policies based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with state and/or federal law updates. Second reading of policy zero one four two point one Electoral Process.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second to approve policy zero one four two point one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of policy five five three zero, student use or possession of intoxicants, drugs, or paraphernalia, drug prevention.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second to approve policy five five three zero. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Second reading of new policy eighty-seven hundred, lactating employees.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Motion in a second for new policy eighty-seven hundred. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Rescind policy three one two zero point zero seven, employment of casual resource personnel.
Motion approved.
Motion in a second to rescind policy three one two zero point zero seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion items, none. Informational items, none. Following language and policies listed below will be updated to reflect twenty twenty-four changes in Title Nine update. Clients, soon com, excuse me, student complaints. Clients, soon can, excuse me, student complaints will now be Director of Student Services. Staff complaints, Director of Human Resources. Fourteen twenty-two, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity administration. Three one two two, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity professional. Four one two two, nondiscrim, nondiscrimination and equal employment of opportunity support staff. Sixteen sixty-two, employee anti, anti harassment administration. Three three six two, employee anti harassment professional. Four three six two, employee anti harassment support. Two two six zero, nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity. Two two six zero point zero one, section five oh four slash ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Sixteen twenty-three, section five oh four slash ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability in employment. Administration. Three one two three, section five oh four slash ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability in employment professional. Four one two three, section five oh four, ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability in employment support staff. Fifty-five seventeen, student anti harassment.
Good job, Steve. Got them all.
Motion to accept.
There you go.
Motion in second to accept the Policies and Rules Committee report. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Other reports by board members.
Just wanted to discuss the possibility of extending summer one more month. Like.
And you have to approve.
New calendar. Just for us.
Just in life.
Just for the school board. Anything else by anybody? Any other district or program highlights, Amy, at this time?
There is a lot going on right now in our world. Um, new teachers uh come next week. We have orientation. I believe it's five days of orientation. We do have a handful of new staff that'll be joining us. Um, there are people who are not licensed in those areas on our reemployment list. So special education and secondary teachers, we have um some new folks in those positions. Our shared leadership teams meet this week. So we have three days of planning our, and um, school improvement plans coming up a week. Uh, student registration information goes out this week. So families will be asked to update those documents. We have open houses at the end of the month. Middle school and the high school are on the twenty-eighth and the elementary is on the twenty-ninth. All staff come back on the twenty-seventh. I will say that where we won't be having a breakfast that day, we'll be having a lunch at the high school. So that is a change. There'll be more than that. But um, that's kind of the, the change for um, all staff come back on the twenty-seventh. And so it's a busy time of year for us.
You're really holding fast to Thursday's announcement.
I am. It's fun. Yeah.
I'm sleepy.
So the, the twenty-seventh though is going to be the opening day?
That's when all staff come back.
Okay.
Twenty-seventh, it's Tuesday.
And what time, would, if board members can make it?
So all board members are, are welcome and encouraged to join us.
Eleven thirty.
Thirty. About eleven thirty to one thirty will be the schedule for the day. Clearly not one of the guest speakers this year. There's no guest speakers.
Guest speaker.
I thought maybe he was gonna sing. Maybe.
Whatever. Consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Should have a second to uh pay our bills. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time it accepts a motion to adjourn. Should we talk for like two more hours?
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Beautiful.
Motion in a second. Yes, we have second.
Second.
Second. To adjourn. All favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very nice. Nicely done.